Hi. He's here, he's going through security.
You parked right in front of Leonard, right?
Yeah.
Good. It was good. We got them there on time.
That in and of itself is...
You know, what's nerve wracking is that this is the first, my youngest is in kindergarten.
Okay.
So it's the first year that we don't take, get out of the car and walk.
Yeah.
You gotta get out of the car and go.
That's, yeah. I love that.
Are your kids turning?
They're, no, no, no. It's in October, baby.
Starts like a freak school section.
All right. In the south?
Yeah, south.
I'm good, how are you? Also, when do you start? Monday?
When do yours start, Monday?
Yeah.
Yeah, we just got, we got off my new U M one, see what my experience got for us. It seems to me to get U M one.
I'm going there right after this.
Did I be gay?
No.
I tried to bring you Notre Dame, but Mason said no, unfortunately.
I love being a little...
We should put that as a wager on the Florida Miami game, remember, where it's that's who gets some shopping.
Are you going?
You gotta wear it.
I love you. I want to bless you.
Sorry, brother. Walking by, relative, hot one, of course, they come, shelter right now.
That's always the case, that's always the case.
Three to seven, seven o'clock.
I got you.
Mike. Okay, we call this meeting to order at six oh five. Here.
Here. Councilman Dion?
Here.
Councilman Lamas?
Here.
Councilman Perez Crespo?
Here.
There is a quorum.
Okay, let's please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you, you may be seated. Okay, we move on to our presentation of the proposed fiscal, proposed fiscal year 2025-2026 budget by City Manager J.C. Jimenez and Finance Director Chris Chioka. Gentlemen, thank you for your hard work, please take it away.
Thank you, Mayor, council members, it's, it's on yet. It's a pleasure to present to you this year's proposed budget. As you remember, last year, things were like a little uncertain. The golf course was, was, you know, just not making money, it just reopened. And the prior year to that, you know, the council, the, at that, at that time, the council had balanced the budget using, you know, reserves. So we were able to overcome that, and now I'm proud to let you know, I'm pleased to let you know that everything's looking a lot better now. You know, I did try this earlier, I, there we, no wait, hold on. There we go. So this year, property values went up eight point one percent. We are, because of that, we are proposing that we are going to lower the millage rate to six point eight one, down from six point eight six. This will generate, as you see there, twelve million dollars, twelve million two oh nine, as compared to last year's eleven three nine, three seven nine. This includes, this budget that we're proposing does include a three percent COLA for full-time employees, general employees. The police, they have a contract, that's all included in the contract that they have. This, this graph here illustrates our trend in millage rates. As you can see, it's from 2015, which was above seven six, to today, it's almost a whole millage point lower. And we'll, we try to continue that trend as best as possible, and when practiced.
Do you want me to?
Hold on. At this rate, this is a... Conversely, you see the, this chart here that shows property values. So what you would like to see, and what you've heard the governor talk about a lot lately, is property values have increased, and cities have, you know, at least our city, has done a good job in bringing the millage rate down. So you see, kind of like the opposite effect, property value's going up, millage rate's coming down. So we start talking about each individual department. Under the mayor and council, some of the highlights that you're going to see here is, you know, obviously, at the very first slide, you saw a centennial logo. We have fifty thousand dollars budgeted for the centennial, for centennial events, whatever that may, whatever that may include. I wanted to provide a little seed money, just in case, if we have to put some money down, take care of something. This is a big year, it only comes around once. The good news is, this is not going to be a reoccurring expense, and it's only for our centennial year. Maybe in a hundred years from now, we'll budget another fifty grand. Also, you guys, we have a new council, we have three new council members. The travel budget, I did increase it, because I am going to encourage you all to go to Tallahassee, to DC with me, and to get involved in the Florida League of Cities, the Dade League of Cities. So those are really important, that you join me in doing those things. Also, we're going to keep funding the circle and special events, including the Boys, the Boys and Girl Scouts, and the Optimist, and the same funding remains. Under City Clerk, the proposed budget there is up by forty eight, forty eight point three percent, but that's mainly due to the passport services. There we have an additional one part-time officer, we are, or part-time employee. We're moving the passport facility over to where the old TPO office was, currently under construction, and that will allow us to bring in additional appointments, open it up to more appointments, more revenue. You can see we have a projected revenue of a hundred and fifty grand. There's also ten thousand dollars allocated for an election. Next year, we're looking if, you know, the thirty six, the Southeast Springs project, you know, leads to, you know, an election, so I ask the voters to change the charter or change something, this is going to allow us, this will provide funding for that election. Bring back one.
There we go, sorry.
City manager's budget, there's really no increase there, that is just COLA, the city manager's office, my staff, that it's only mainly due to the COLA. Human Resources, that one was decreased by one eight, one point eight five percent. This year, we're completing, in this current budget, we're completing the classification and compensation study. Once we get those results, I, my goal is to implement a merit-based structure, where we provide employee valuations, and then whatever merit type of system that, you know, we can come up with, whether it's merit, step increases, bonuses, whatever it is, it's cities, different cities use different approaches. There is, this year, a four point five percent increase to health insurance, but division and dental has all stayed the same. Finance and professional services, this one's up by five percent. That's mainly due to the new contract that we have with our accounting, our auditing firm, and magistrate fees also increased. And what else? Do we have anything else there, Chris?
The auditors and the actuaries and the magistrate fees, mainly.
Under the professional services side of it, that one is down twenty eight point two percent, mainly due, there was an elimination of a position that it's not being filled. The legal fees, but the budget stays the same. C G A, it's basically flat, that stays, it's like, the numbers came out to like nine hundred and eighty-six dollars increase, which is point four two percent. Police, their overall budget, now, police, I have to say, has done an incredible job in reviewing their, their, their budget, and eliminating unnecessary expenditures, finding ways to save money, which we've seen with the renegotiation of the red light cameras that we saw yesterday. So their overall budget is up by three point three percent, and that's mainly due to salaries. Now, as we get to the capital portion of it, you'll see some, some improvements that, that they've made, and you'll see some of the highlights for, that the residents can expect to see. Crossing guards, that, I mean, that's what it is right there, it's one point three nine percent. Code compliance, just salary increases, merit increases, it's only up by one point, one and a half percent. I T, the reason why it's a significant increase in there, we're adding a part-time position to I T. I T, at one point, they had three employees, then it went down to two, but then one of those guys resigned, took a job somewhere else, so it left our I T director all by themselves. So we're going to give him a part-time for some additional help.
And you guys safeguarded the internet?
Yes. Well, that's, that's a Zoom issue. Recreation, and I forgot to take that capital improvement, I have a separate slide for capital improvements and highlights there. But overall, budget is up by six, six point seven six, that's salaries, and the biggest increase there is the tennis program. We, before, we had that Valiente Tennis Academy experience, experiment, but now, since we take, took it on in-house, that it increased that line item pretty significantly. So that's the biggest bulk there that you're going to see. Which, by the way, Omar and his staff have done an incredible job in operating and maintaining the golf court, I mean, not the golf course, some of the tennis center, which I, I can, I mean, you guys were getting, it's not all of you, but most of you are getting emails, significant amount of emails about the tennis center in Valiente, and that has pretty much all gone away. Public services, one of the surprises that we have in here is, we're going to be planting flowers along, you know, in celebration of the centennial, and I've heard a number of people saying how beautiful the flowers along Curtis Parkway used to be. We're going to do something, we're going to try to bring that back, budget some money to bring that back to commemorate the centennial, and we'll see how we can keep it moving forward. I'm working with Juan on the best, best approach and how we can, how we can do it. I think it might be every other plant, every other tree that we're going to do it, but hopefully, we can get that done, we will get it done for, for the centennial year. So that's something the residents can look forward to. Other than that, the proposed budget is up, it's basically up because of COLAs, and another important factor here is, we're bringing, we're starting, we're increasing the starting wage for a maintenance worker there, from, I think it's fifteen, fifteen thirty-six, is it, Chris? I have a hard time remembering the number.
I think it's seventeen and change with the COLA, and then we're bringing it up to, after the COLA, eighteen sixty.
Eighteen sixty, so that basically brings them from thirty-five, thirty-six thousand a year to just a little under forty thousand dollars a year for starting salary. That's to remain competitive in, in the market. The Golf and Country Club, overall, eleven percent, eleven point six percent increase there. The biggest items there for him, I mean, this is not even including some of the capital improvements that you're going to see in a short bit, but the cost of maintaining the, the golf course. The biggest increase there is fertilizer, pesticides, insecticides, everything that takes to keep the grass green, keep the, the fairways free from weeds, and the, and the greens green. The transfers, one thing that you're going to, well, here, we're transferring less money over from the general fund, over to take care of that service. The biggest one here, the most significant one here is the Senior Center. Our, our senior services director, Tammy Key, has done an excellent job in reducing her overall costs, when, if you can see here, the amended budget in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five, the transfer from the general fund to cover those expenses with seven hundred and twenty-nine thousand. This year, it went down to three hundred and eighty thousand. We did receive additional funding from Tallahassee, but that's more really for the homebound meals and that the L S P funds. She's, she just has done a great job in tightening the belt over there. Here are some of the highlights you're going to be able to see. Now, one of the things that we struggle with here is a lot of deferred maintenance, a lot of, you know, the can getting kicked down the road, and every now and then, we have to pick, you know, pick up the cans. So in, in this budget year, what you can see from golf course, we're going to be putting, installing a continuous cart path throughout the entire golf course, not just half of it. Additional sod and hedges to make the golfing experience much better. The better product you have, the more you sell, that's the, that's the idea. Police vehicles, originally, they had two vehicles budgeted at a hundred and twenty thousand, but they've been researching, and we've actually, we've been meeting with them for, I feel like since I walked into this place, with Enterprise Fleet, this is the contract that you guys approved yesterday. Instead of buying two vehicles, we're going to lease fourteen vehicles for about the same amount, that's actually about a hundred and thirty thousand, a hundred and forty thousand. This will help us eliminate, or get rid of, or replace, not get rid of, but replace, the older expensive, expensive and maintenance fleet that we have. That, on top of, hopefully, we get the five hundred thousand from the federal government that we're currently in play for, that will pretty much give us, and the, and the ones that we bought recently with ARPA funds, we should have a very, like, a completely brand-new fleet within the next year. And then that brings down maintenance costs. Public Works, there are, there are sixteen air conditioners on top of the rec center. All of them need to be replaced, actually, all but four are down, four of them are working, because those were the ones replaced a few years back. We need to replace the rest of them. In this budget, we have five A C units being replaced up there, and then next year, I'll replace, you know, a little more, until we, all of them are replaced. The problem is, there hasn't been much maintenance over them, you know, over the years, and I should have, I was going to include some pictures in there, if you look at some of the pictures, you would swear that somebody went up there and kicked them, it was that bad. The Parks and Recreation, the Aquatic Center, there's been discussion about a pool here. Every year, it goes down, it breaks, it needs to be replaced, this year, we're replacing it. The pool grates are also getting replaced, and the entire aquatic center, the building is getting, is getting painted. The turf at P V is, is being, are we, are we doing turf, or are we replacing the turf? Doing new turf for the playground. Installing pool cameras, we're renovating the tennis facility, and what that means is, we're resurfacing two of the tennis courts, which we, we do, we budget every year, and then we're also making some improvements to the pro shop at the tennis facility. Then the basketball courts, in the basketball courts, you know, that big net, that divider that divides both of them, well, it's starting to malfunction. The mechanism up top and the net is all, it's starting to malfunction, so we're replacing that this year, it's about fifteen years old. The clerk's office, we have, is the, we're replacing the server, or the Laserfish server is going cloud-based, and in I T, we're replacing a number of the servers here, and including backups. Senior Services, we have, the, the overall budget is up eleven point twenty-eight percent, that's mainly because of food, that's food right there. We are in the first year of a brand-new six-year contract with the Alliance for Aging for their funding. This is a significant source of revenue for us, which later on, there's a slide where I talk about some of my concerns moving to the future, this, this will tie into that concern. Law enforcement trust fund, this is the fund where, where we put money from forfeitures and seizures, we put that in here, this has gone down, because haven't been many, there hasn't been a lot of money coming into it, so the police have said, hey, we don't really want to spend any, a lot of that money, so they've reduced that number. Road and Transportation, this is the shuttle, we are in the process, I did get a grant to switch over to an on-demand type of service, you've seen them in, in different cities, the Free V is a very popular one, Circuit is another popular one, we're exploring that, want to get that done, actually, we're, I believe, we're working on the R F P, oh, yeah, actually, we're working on the R F P to get that done, so that's something to look forward to as well. Building Operations, not many increases there, it's just one point one five percent, that's due to salaries. Now, keep on, keep in mind that the Building Operations Fund, the Building Department, they have their own fund, that doesn't come out of, it's not general fund dollars, that is a special, basically, a special revenue fund that the state requires, that can't be commingled. Debt Service, this is, we're paying down our loans, we're paying, paying back our debt, and this is what you see there, and this is according to the schedules of the various different, the various loans that we have. Stormwater Fund, this budget is down fifty-one percent, and that's, we've completed a number of, we've completed a big one, is the East and Oakwood Drive, that's coming to a close. Let's see here, we have a few projects in progress, I don't really think that we're just done with projects. Forest Drive, that's in, we're about to start designing on that one, and then South Drive, the design is complete, and we're currently procuring the C E I services. Once we have the C E I services consultant onboard, then we're going to move forward to our, the R F P for construction. And the Stormwater Master Plan is going to be completed this year, and that we have a grant for. Sanitation Fund, this is your garbage pickup, this one, this one continues to concern me. At the end of, well, at the beginning of this current budget season, or the, the current budget that we're in, the current fiscal year, prior to it, we, we came to you and we adjusted the rates. We won't see what that impact is until we get audited at the end of this fiscal year, so we'll see how that, that adjustment was made. We also, the county increased their fees, so we just recently, you guys, maybe it was like a month or, two months ago, approved another, an additional increase there as well, just to offset that increase that the county has passed on to us. Future projects, these are coming down the pike, these are future needs, here's a list. You know, the golf course roof has been talked about for a while, although it seems to be in decent shape right now, the, fortunately, the leak that we fixed earlier this year, Fortunately, the the leak that we fixed earlier this year was not from the roof, if not, it was just from the parrot, from the wall where the cart barn connects, that was taken care of. Our Public Works fleet, and I'm talking the pickup trucks, that's aid, they're aging, you can just see them, you see that they're, they're old. Entryway signage, I know that Councilman Lama's in our meetings, that's one of your, one of your pet projects that you want to see done, better, better entryway signage into our city, and I completely agree with you. And overall city beautification, that's something that I, that I would like to see done. I'm talking like street furniture, street lights, that overall beautification coming, you know, in the future. An ERP system, that's your enterprise system where you run your business, and ours is kind of all over the place, and both Chris and I have, you know, we have dreams of, you know, replacing it at one point, but I put it on the list because it is a need. Then you have, I mean, I don't know if you guys want me to go through each of these items, but those are the lists, these are a number of the projects that are going to be coming sooner than later. I included this slide here, just so you can see, this is from the audit, and this is the the sanitation fund. If you look at the bottom number there, it's nine hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars in the red. It's, it's, it's been a problem, and I've talked to you, each of you individually. I believe we have the rates in place now to stop the bleed, but it's something that we have to look at as far as how we collect, and just to make it more efficient, more cost-effective, how we bill, like, for example, and it's, this doesn't really affect the single-family homes, but like, the, it came to my attention that the apartment buildings pay really low rate per unit, like, a dollar something per unit. So we're, we're, I have Public Works looking at that, be providing some recommendations to me to to address those in the very near future, because it's, the way it's operating now, it's, it's not sustainable. And as Juan has told me, he's like, it's, it's just not working. So that'll be coming this fiscal year, that we'll have that conversation at a meeting and and bring those those figures to you. The next one is stormwater. Stormwater is in, is in, is in good shape. We have, what, four, the ending net position, we're at four million, so we're, we're in good shape there. Some of the, some of the decrease that you see there, those are because of the projects that we've had, but overall, we're in good shape. As a matter of fact, we're also looking as part of the, the, what's it called, the Impact Fee Study, we're looking at the stormwater rate as well, to make sure we're in line with what Miami-Dade County, what the surrounding communities charge, and make sure we're not out of line anywhere. These are my concerns, looking ahead, and I think we've all seen the governor talk about re-eliminating property taxes, and I have no reason to doubt him, that he's, they're gonna do something. They already initiated the study, so what does that look for us? I don't know. It does concern me, because obviously, property, property taxes is where we get a significant amount of our revenue from, to fund this city, and we'll see where that goes. I think by this upcoming legislative session, which is early this year, it's, I think, committee weeks start at the end of this year, and then in January, the session begins, we'll, we'll know a lot more as far as where they're going to go with it. The other thing that concerns me, well, obviously, property, property values, they start leveling off and start dipping, that also affects us. And then the last thing that concerns me is the Senior Center. The Senior Center is, is a, is a department extremely dependent on grants from the federal government, for the Alliance for Aging, and from the state, mainly because of the food, mainly of the meals. So it's something to keep an eye on. Tammy Key has done a great job in in getting, you know, expenditures and under control and bringing them down, reducing them as much as possible, but if one day the federal government says, you know what, no more grants, and the state says, no more grants, then we're going to have to have a very difficult conversation. But I'm not worried about it right now, it's just, it's always in the back of my mind. And with that, I think that is your, your budget.
Thank you.
That, that's the last slide, right?
Yeah.
Well, I, I had a couple of questions, I don't know if you guys had some questions, so what, does anybody have any questions? I didn't want to stop you.
No, it's fine, I appreciate it.
J C had a question. We, when we met, we looked at the possibility of soundproofing the gym at the rec center.
Yes, I spoke with, with Omar about it, and he got me some prices, but he doesn't feel that it is absolute, it's, what can I say? He's not sure that installing that is going to resolve the problem of the noise in there. It would have been built with it, when you first built it, there's no guarantees that it's really going to work. And plus, he says, listen, it's really not a non, it's not an issue, because we have basketball games and stuff like that, but he didn't really see a need for it, and that was his, his, from his mouth.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll take turns with questions here. What, I, I saw that you're projecting, the projected revenues for the passport office, like, what, what's your plan to, because I know that as you're budgeting for that, what's your plan to scale if you, like, kind of enter the, the future with that?
Well, right now, our plan is to, Erica can jump in, but we're going to have two employees, we're going to have a full-timer and then a part-timer over there to handle the, the passports. We can increase the, the amount of appointments and even accept walk-ins in there. In addition, police has said that their staff that's going to be there will also help out as far as processing, they're going to learn how to process passports.
I'll go ahead and ask some other questions.
Sure.
In terms of, in terms of the, the tennis center, I know that we're doing a better job, is that as you're budgeting for that, is, is it sustainable? Do you think that it's, like?
Yeah, I, I think it's sustainable for now. I, I don't, I haven't had a problem with them, with the way we've been doing it. I, I think it's sustainable. We've been using, or for, we have a couple of coaches out there, and really had no issues whatsoever, and plus, the, the amount isn't like so much that it's like, whoa, it's going to break us.
So do you think, do you think you want to pivot to, to have us continue, or we're just?
No, I think we're going to stay, we're going to, we're going to continue, we're going to continue doing, at least for this upcoming fiscal year, and, and see if, I mean, if something happens and we need to change our approach, we will, but right now, it's going pretty well. And quite frankly, the residents seem to like it, and it's, it's worth a lot when, when they like it.
And when you were talking about in the Public Works budget, having the, the five ACs that we're replacing.
Yes.
And, and I think you had mentioned that maintenance, you know, maintenance may have been a contributing factor to having, being in the situation where we have so many of them that are down.
Yes.
Do we outsource that maintenance, or is that on Public Works to, to do those? Like, once, so now, once we get to these new ones, is Public Works going to do the maintenance, or do, or do we outsource, like, a company that comes out and just maintains?
As far as, as far as your, you know, he's got a couple of new members of the team from property maintenance. As far as the general maintenance, replacing of the air filters, draining the, you know, the drain lines, cleaning the drain lines, washing down the units, we'll do that in-house.
You guys do all that?
If we, if we need maintenance, if something goes down, then we call somebody else.
Well, if you're doing that maintenance, then you'll see the things, you'll see the next-level maintenance that has happened.
Yeah, but as far as the stuff that we do at our houses, they're going to do it in-house.
All right. Any other questions, mind you guys?
Yeah, I have a question. J C, the, the project at Thirty Canal Street, the parking that they were going to pay for?
Yes.
Is that factored into this?
That money comes in, well, once they, they're going to, they're paying it over a couple of months. That money's just going to go into our general fund, reserved just for, because we don't have a separate parking fund, there's going to be earmarked for parking, that's not included here. That revenue's not included here, and neither is the expenditure. When that project, because I think I have mentioned, one thing I want to do is improvements to Canal Street and the parking there. When I bring that project to you, I will bring the expenditure and the revenue, we'll make a budget amendment at that time, but I didn't do it yet. Okay? So if I were to include it in the budget, I'd have the revenue and then the expenditure, net same, it's, and that difference is the same. Okay?
To the chair, I mean, that money has to be allocated for that particular local area, I should say.
It's, it's, the way it's written, it's got to go towards parking, parking improvements, but I think that is the, the area of greatest, it just happens that it's the area of greatest need. I don't have enough money to build a parking garage, but if I can improve the parking there, and that whole area, and the walkability of that area, so if somebody's parking a little further down, but they have a nice sidewalk to, to walk towards the downtown, you know, I've made a difference there. Plus, I think if we have enough space, and again, I'm going to need a, an engineer or somebody to show me, but if I have enough space, I can go from angled parking to head-in parking, and I can increase the amount of parking spaces, possibly, but I don't know if I have enough space, I need somebody to look at that.
Just make it attractive to people to go there and actually use the spaces.
Gonna make it good looking.
You're going to get extra space just by that.
To the chair, so I've been approached by the Historical Society, and they, they were curious, and they're interested in funding for accounting purposes.
Okay, yeah.
Or an accountant, yeah.
Yeah, they, they came and approached me about it. I do have money in this budget, it's something that's not in the presentation, I have money in there, budgeted for the storage units that they have, and the city has historically been paying for the storage units for the, the items that people have donated, the historical items that have, people have donated over the years. So we have two storage units there that we're paying for. They recently came to my office and they requested that I budget six thousand dollars, what they asked me for, for an accountant to do their finances, and I said, no. I said, no, I'm not going to, I'm not going to get involved in your operations, your operational cost is your operational cost, I cannot absorb that, cannot pay for your, your, I mean, your personnel. He, I mean, was not very happy with it, and he said he was going to reach out to me and say, listen, if they tell me to budget it, I mean, they're my bosses.
What are we paying on the storage?
The storage, how much is the storage, Chris?
I believe seventy-two hundred a year.
What?
Seven thousand two hundred?
Seven thousand two hundred. It's two storage units.
How many, is that two ten-by-ten storage units?
I believe so.
Or ten-by-twenty?
No, it's not the big ones, no.
I don't remember the size.
Yeah, it's not, it's not the big ones.
I did see them one day, I, I didn't measure them, and there's plenty of stuff in them.
Maybe it's time for a garage sale. But I do, let me ask you, oh, sorry. Go ahead, you're, you started the conversation.
No, it's fine.
To the chair, I apologize. The same conversation, we have, they're the optimists in the, in the boys' club. What is it we're doing with the optimists?
The optimist club is, they, like, this year, for example, they, they came in and they asked for the circle closure, and then saw a donation for, I guess, this event that they have, that barbecue thing that they do, that they did, if I'm not mistaken, but we just kept the funding the same from last year.
We don't know the amount of that.
What's the, the total amount on the, on the?
Twenty.
You have it?
Twenty-eight hundred.
Twenty-eight hundred. What's the total line item for donations and stuff?
Forty-seven thousand two hundred before the fifty thousand for the centennial events.
And what's, what's included, the forty, the forty-seven thousand, what's, what's in there? Sorry.
Various donations, eight thousand for circle events, twenty-eight hundred for the optimist barbecue, two thousand for Stafford Golf Tournament, five thousand for the employee holiday, three thousand for police appreciation dinner, two car shows for three thousand, thirty-two hundred for shred days, and the historical storage unit for seventy-two hundred.
So the total there, you see what's included in that total number.
Thank you.
To the chair, J C, do we foresee any sales of merchandise tied to the centennial celebration?
I, I did not budget that, because I, there's no way for me to tell or project, and I didn't want to put in a revenue number, and thus not hit that number. So, I mean, if we start selling centennial merchandise and, and revenues start coming in, we can use that money, obviously, for centennial purposes, but I'm not going to use that into the general fund, and so it'll come in and just go out to whatever, you know, the centennial event or program that, that we need to pay for.
To the chair, in reference to the Historical Society, obviously, I think, you know, now listening to the seventy-two hundred dollars for storage, I wasn't kidding about a garage sale and seeing what we can reduce there, if possible, I'm not sure.
That, last year, la, last year, prior to the budget last year, they requested a third one, and I went over there and I said, no, I'm not going to, I'm not even going to do a third, we got to get this under control. And they, true to form, they, they didn't ask for a third one, and they're dealing with their, their, the way they handle it. Now, as far as what happens with that equipment, with that, that, not equipment, memorabilia, the artifacts, I, I don't know what they, what they do. I think they rotate it out and to put it into display at the museum, and then they, they kind of bring things in and out.
We don't have the space here, but, I mean, I know this year, we're obviously, because of Centennial, we're leaning on them a lot, you know, for help, volunteers, and that's also brings a little, you know, stress to, to their volunteer staff. You know, we'd like to see how we could help there, I mean, six thousand dollars for bookkeeping, not sure how we can address that, but I think storage is one of them, I don't know, there's this possibility, just like anybody's household, that you have stuff in there that you're never going to use, and, you know, because even eliminating one, it looks like we can just, you know.
I'm going through moving hell right now. I know, I have a lot of stuff that we can get rid of.
So I'd, I'd like to chime in on that. So I think that with what we're going to do for the centennial year, I think that we're doing a lot to invest in promoting the, the history of Miami Springs, right? So I think that, that, that we're, we're very, we're very mindful of that. We have supported the Historical Society in a previous council, we paid to have the, you know, like, a decorative fence put up, which, by the way, I think, I think, I would think, I would have to ask, I think that for a current exhibit, they had to, like, bring down the back fence, and it's, like, chained, chained up against the fence there. But we have, we have continued to, to support them. I feel, and again, we're investing a lot in promoting the history of, of, you know, in terms of, like, budgeted money and, and time and attention, and a lot of, you know, a lot of plans that, that we're eagerly making for this coming year. But I, I feel a little uncomfortable, you know, if, if they need accounting or a, or a bookkeeper for us to, like you said, get involved, I mean, I think that that kind of speaks to the viability if, if, if they can't, like, keep their own books, right? I mean, I think that we are providing monetary support, but, and again, we got, you know, may, maybe in the future, but we're already budgeting a lot, you know, to try to help. So, I mean, I, I, if you said no because you're looking at the budget, you have to look at the entire chessboard, right? And, and so I, I would agree that, that, that maybe this isn't the year to, to do that.
Again, this is, it's nothing against the, the Historical Society or any, or any of the organizations that, that come, but I've had to, over the years, you know, tell even CMI, no. And Mayor Wheeler, former Mayor Wheeler, president of the, of the CMI, he's doing great. I, I can't tell one yes, especially for something to, to maintain their operations going. You know, he did make, I, I just, I don't want the city to all of a sudden be in charge of this, 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 this five oh one C three, and, and then what? Then if, if it's up to me, then I, you know, we, we can't sustain that on, on general fund.
Yep. Especially with finances, there has to be a firewall between that.
We have to separate.
Possibly, if they were to bring the storage units from, you know, two to one, and then to one storage unit, maybe some of that money then could be allocated to accounting or somewhat, they will have to. accounting or somewhat, they will have to figure that out, but I'll, I'll have a conversation with Jaime about it.
And that building they're at, they, they can't expand that building either?
No.
No, it's not, it's, that, I believe we leased that from.
Day County Schools.
We lease it?
Yeah, the city does.
So we're paying for that lease?
It's, I don't think.
Or it's not, it's not one of those things where you, a dollar a year or something like that? Okay.
So, it's not earth-shattering, you know?
Yeah, and, I mean, um, it's, they approached me with this, and I wanted to, I, I, I like to recognize the guys that are here, the heads of all, all our departments, you know, Kevin, Juan, and, um, uh.
Omar.
And Omar, sorry, I went, I went in a blank. Uh, you guys are working with, uh, you know, whatever is given to you, like, I think right now with the ACs, I don't know how you guys are doing it, or in the rec center, the water slide, um, you know, I think we need to allocate those funds and bring that up and, uh, try.
You know, and I, I didn't, I mean, this one is just the budget for next year. I didn't hit the highlights, things that we've accomplished this year, and I will do that, I'll do that in October, once, once we finish the fiscal year, I'll, I'll do something for, for the council, to just really, I, I mean, I need to promote the accomplishments, accomplishments here, um, of our staff. We have, the, the residents here are extremely lucky, um, we have a staff that cares, um, that's been here a long time, some of them are residents, um, I've worked for a couple of cities, um, and these, the, this staff, I mean, they care, they get it, they, they care, they care about well-being of the residents and their money. So, um, I'm very proud, there's a lot to be proud of, for sure.
I'd really like to hear from, uh, each one of these gentlemen, like, what they would need in, like, the country club, you know, to have, I mean, we're, we're right in the middle of the city of the county. We, we just, uh, Mel Reese closed down, and it would be great to have, like, a great country club where, you know, something that we could be proud of, the rec center, we have a rec center, and Omar is pretty much, uh, working with the best that he could get, you know, like, and I would love to see.
When we, when we start the budget process, I have those meetings with them saying, hey, what is that you guys need, where, where do you wanna go with this, um, what are your long-term plans? And so, and so we start, you know, they start filling in the gaps, right? Give me the projects, like, look, this is what I need, this priority, this is secondary, and so, 'cause there's only a, a finite number of, of, uh, of dollars to go around.
And the garbage trucks.
So I have to balance every department with an X amount of, of money, and all of them have very valid reasons why they need certain things. So what I try to do is, is, okay, you guys can, you, you know, top priorities and kinda go down, go down the line. Fortunately, this year, we did have, you know, a decent year, um, property value-wise, and, and, um, so we, we were able to accomplish it, at least budget for, uh, a few extra things. As you noticed, recreation center, one of the last things that we, we even included in there, it was something that was probably gonna be an issue next year, but we're gonna take care of it this year, 'cause I don't know what next year holds, and so if I can take care of a need now, that's, that's the approach I did. But at the same time, I wanted to make sure, and the, again, I've told you all this, with the governor and the way he's been meeting with his Doge and, and, and some of the other cities, I wanted to make sure that we show that we're continuing to lower our mileage rate as well.
I mean, the facts are, you lower the mileage rate, and the quality of the service stays the same, or even in some cases, better.
I like to think so.
What can I say?
So I, I'd like to kinda speak to that, as, as somebody who's, who was here before, you've, you've streamlined the budget process. Um, I, the, when I first got on council, the budget process was very different. I think that, uh, a lot of it was done on, I think a lot of the process was done on the dais, um, just my opinion, but I feel like it, it sometimes, like, became like, kinda public spectacle, and, and, and I've appreciated the last couple of years, the way you've run the process, because you've, you know, you're our chief administrator, right? I mean, like, we've, we've had several budget conversations, it's not that you're not checking in with us, we've met about the budget several times with, with our finance director. But I, I, I know the work that you've put into this budget, um, and, uh, and I feel like you have been the, the person that people have gone to, you've managed all of the needs of, and although, you know, all the wishes and needs and, and, and demands of the city, and I think that you've done an excellent job. So I, I, as you were presenting, I was writing some things down, right, in, in a, in a different order, but e, each one of these, I was kind of writing it as you were presenting it, right? Like, I was seeing, like, where your, this budget is saving us money, uh, this budget represents where you've gotten better deals and you've maximized, uh, value, uh, you, this budget shows where you're steam, or streamlining processes and making things more efficient, which is what's causing us in many cases to save the money and maximize the, the value. You're expanding services, uh, you're taking care of employees with the COLA, uh, you're offering unique amenities that, that weren't available before, you're, you have, this budget is addressing, you know, beautifying the city, uh, you're addressing persistent infrastructure problems that, you know, cans that have been kicked down the road, you're establishing, like, proactive maintenance, we're talking about that, you're investing in future project, you're preparing us and posturing the city, uh, to best deal with negative impacts of things that are coming, uh, and you're lowering the mileage rate for residents. So I feel like, for a process that you're running, where you're looking at the entire chessboard, as I said, I feel like you've done a great job of, of putting the pieces in the right place, and I think that you're taking care of, uh, of all the needs of the city and, and our constituents. So I, I personally appreciate the efforts that you've, uh, put into it, so, thank you. And I, I wanna also thank Chris Gioka, because I know that this budget process, you could not do it without our finance director.
Right there.
Right?
He's, um, one of the best.
Yeah.
Finance directors, and I can't say the best because my wife is a finance director, so he's one of those.
Oh, there too.
So he's one of the best I know, um, and that I've worked with. And, and honestly, we have great directors.
Yep.
Yeah.
When I met with them, their understanding, you know, I think they do appreciate that they don't have to come here and face you guys, like, some kind of congressional hearing. Um, but when I, when I saw the budget process prior to me getting here, um, the charter clearly states that, the, or the charter, the, I think it's the charter, the, the manager, one of the responsibilities of the manager is to provide you with a balanced budget. That's what I'm doing. I work with the staff, it's not fair to you or to the staff for you to determine what you're gonna fund, because then it becomes political, and I'm not saying that's what you guys did, but it can lead to that. So you, what, 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 what's the tendency, right? Let's, parks and recreation, very sexy, police, absolutely necessary, and then things like public works, they're like, eh, can we do that later? Can we push that to the next one? A pool heater, can we do that next time? 'Cause those aren't sexy, but those are necessary. My job is to get it all done.
So what, uh, what, uh, the, the other thing, just selfishly, it also meant that we had to meet, like, many more times for hours and hours and hours, because a lot of the process was being, you know, the sausage making was being done publicly, uh, which, it's, nothing wrong with being publicly, but it's just, you know, it's a long process to have to do, uh, publicly, so I think, I think that, uh, that's been great. What is, uh, our next budget workshop will be to do?
It will be to, the, it's not a budget workshop, the night, we're, from here, we move on to the hearings. The two hearings required by law, um, first, first hearing is.
September eighth?
September eighth.
The twenty-second.
At what time?
At seven.
At seven o'clock, we have the first hearing. Basically, it's gonna be approving what you just saw here right now, unless something happens, I have to make a change, but I don't foresee that happening. And then the other one is September?
Twenty-second.
Twenty-second?
Twenty-second. Yep. And you know what, I cannot underscore enough that, in light of everything that this budget is offering, we're also lowering the mileage rate. Uh, and we, we talk all the time that, you know, everybody's property values are going up, so even if the mileage rate stays the same, you're, you're always paying a little bit more. So the fact that we're lowering the mileage rate as popular values, uh, are going up, uh, and particularly, as you mentioned, during a time when, you know, state auditors are really looking into, I think that we're, we're showing a, a very healthy trajectory. Um, do you, I think it's important to note, uh, would you guys like to speak to reserves?
I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you, recently, as, and then this was as of last year, right, we, we adjusted our policy in which we now have a range of where we wanna kind of maintain a healthy reserve, but during, during leaner times, during more difficult times, right, sometimes you'll dip into reserves to cover some emergency expenses, some, usually they're just one, best practice is one-time costs, usually capital cost, equipment, something that needs to be done, um, or purchased. We, we changed that range from, it, it, now it's a range, before it was what, twenty percent?
Twenty-five.
Twenty-five percent, it was twenty-five percent, the, the minimum, and we changed it to a range of between fifteen and twenty-five, seventeen.
Eighteen and twenty-five.
Eighteen and twenty-five, sorry, I keep saying fifteen, eighteen and twenty-five percent, we, that's the range. And right now, as of the end of, or as of our most recent audit.
We were between twenty-eight and twenty-nine percent.
That's incredible.
And we're estimating ending this year at around twenty-seven percent.
That's incredible, given how much we had dipped into reserves, kinda to make ends meet when, when things were leaner, I, you're, you're doing all this and we've built up, you know, the reserves, so it's a credit.
And I think, uh, to the Chair, I think, uh, you're als, you also spoke about, uh, you know, saving money with, uh, public works, uh, where, you know, the apartment buildings are getting unfair things, and hopefully, if, if we do that, is there any way that then we could put that money, maybe, uh, updating the garbage trucks, or?
Well, the garbage trucks were actually good, right? We have three new garbage trucks. Haven't arrived, but we got three new garbage trucks, and we got two of them already, the third one we're waiting for. So that bought and paid for.
Awesome.
Then we even bought one or two crane trucks.
Two cranes.
Two cranes, those that came in already.
One.
One of them has, one of them has come in already, so we got another one on order. Those bought and paid for, and those, we got those, the cranes and one of the garbage trucks with ARPA funds. So as far as equipment-wise there, we're good. The, really, the fleet that I'm talking about and looking at improving is a lot of the pickup trucks that they gotta drive. You see?
Yeah. Can we hear a little bit more about, like, what you're trying to do with the apartment buildings and the garbage pickup there?
That, that's for the, the solid waste rates.
Okay.
Um, it's come to my, as you can, as you see, um, you have bulk trash every week, and when you go down, in rural points, you know, what is it, north of points, you know? South, south.
South and north.
South and north, right? When you see the apartment buildings, they, like, you see, they, they put up tons of bulk trash, we're the ones that pick it up, and then we collect their garbage as well. The single-family homes, based on what we've seen, they're paying a, a fair rate, but it's come to our attention that those units, per unit, they're paying a lot less, like, significantly less, and it's, it's really, it's, it's killing us. So. Less than, yes, exactly, exactly. So it's, um, something that we gotta look in. I don't have for you a proposal, that's what we're gonna, we're gonna do, we're still looking and evaluating that, um, but I don't really wanna, I don't wanna change the service, but I wanna tackle some of those quirks, if you will, in, in, every now and then you have to take a look at your, your, your practices, how you're billing, making sure that things haven't fallen out, fallen out of line, and this seems like, it's probably a very old practice, um, that nobody's really paid attention to, but it's, it's a big deal.
Thank you.
To the Chair, regarding the senior center, what is your worst-case scenario? If that money disappears, does the food program also shut down? Do they charge the seniors for meals? What do you see that looking like?
This is, I don't wanna, I mean, I know people are watching at home, and I just wanna make it clear, nothing's happening with the senior center, everything's gonna be fine, everything is gonna be good, at least for this upcoming budget year, and for the foreseeable future. It is very grant-heavy, but it's very grant-reliant, federal government and state. What the federal government and the state giveth, they can taketh. That's my fear. Um, I'm not saying they're gonna do that, but we saw last, um, legislative session, not this one that just passed, 'cause we got the full seven-fifty, but the one prior, we were, and Brian fought, Brian, Senator Avila fought real hard, but he was only able to get us seven, uh, three-seventy-five, so we had to make some cuts, especially to the homebound meals and stuff like that. Those grants that we get are really for the food, and some programs, but it's for the food. So if those go away, then we're gonna have to really reassess, maybe work with some of the local organizations, but I don't even wanna, I don't even wanna have that conversation yet, it's very, it's way, it's, it's a fear of mine, it's just something that I wanted to put out there, but nothing that, that, that's not happening right now, so we, we got, thankfully, we have.
It's a fear for contingency plan, right? Because it's not, I don't, I don't think I'm saying anything that you wouldn't know, but like, they're, the last, if they're, if they're cutting funding to seniors, uh, you know, then that's, that's usually the last thing that they're, that they're going.
Yeah, it becomes a political issue.
I mean, that, that, that tends to, to run on soft money like this, and, you know, like, as we contingency plan, right? How can we be in a better position in the event that something like that happens? But there's, there's nothing signaling that.
There's nothing signaling that it's gonna ever, that, that, that it's gonna come to an end anytime soon, as far as funding.
Right.
We keep getting it, but just last year, when, up there, especially in the federal government, the state, the, the money that we get from the state is nice, but it's, it's really for the homebound meals and.
Right.
And we were able to make do.
Right.
With the three-seventy-five. The federal government, that's, that's a bigger impact, the money we get from them, um, through the Alliance for Aging. But last, last year, when they, they filed the, right before they did the fight, their continuing resolution, they, they stopped, they, they said they were gonna stop issuing checks to everything, and the Alliance for Aging was like, hey, we may not be able to send you money this time. So that, I started thinking because of that, I'm like, hey, if, you know, they don't start playing nice up there, it couldn't, you know, roll downhill, and we're at the bottom of the hill. And, um, and so, yeah, it, it put a little fear in me. Thankfully, they were able to resolve it, and we continue getting the money, and we're able to continue feeding seniors.
Well, to the Chair, I'm actually glad that it got a little fear to you, because I think this is a testament to your administration, to your leadership, 'cause unfortunately, we've kicked the can all the time on everything, and that's a big deal. So contingency on that, contingency plan on public works and equipment that's probably gonna come back and hunt us with prices, so, you know, testament to your leadership is an understatement. I think that we have to, we gotta be smart, that's a big one. I've heard other counties dealing with food programs for their seniors, so it's not too far away, just one little cut could make a difference, so.
Yeah, absolutely, Ed. The way I approach it, I try to, kind of, worst-case scenario, almost everything, drives my wife nuts, but try to worst-case it, um, and see the ripple effects of any decision that I make, um, or ripple effects of what others make, 'cause we're a lot, you know, federal government, again, it rolls downhill.
As a matter of fact, I think we mentioned in a conversation, in a meeting that we had about the budget, about, you know, all the uncertainty about how, what, what's gonna be, but everybody's gonna have to face that uncertainty, and if you are far worse positioned than we are, you're gonna be really hurting. So I think that we are in the, in a, in a really good position to deal with the things that are outside of our control. We'll, we'll set the sail as it comes, but I think that, I think that we're in, in really good shape for that challenge.
We're in good shape for this upcoming year. Um, I'm, again, I'm just very proud of the, of the team here, um, and we just wanna continue making you and the residents proud.
All right. Any other comments? All right?
We'll see you at the hearing.
Okay. This meeting is adjourned at seven-oh-five. Thank you.
Shocking. My first year, I was like, thrown into the wolves since rookie year. First, that first term of the budget meeting, hours, and it was. First, that first term of the budget meeting, hours, and it was.